Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I'd like to call a meeting in order for the Bellas Falls Union High School, November 8th. We're in the family engagement room. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Molly, I'd like to add one.
Yes.
Under new business, I'd like to talk about possibility of using the gym for basketball, open gym after the fall sports are finished.
Okay. We're going to add under 8A, discussion on use of the gym. Review and approve board minutes for October 25th. Does anyone have any adjustments they need made to the minutes? I don't see any.
I'm so moved.
Okay. We're going to approve, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of October 25th as written. On a roll call, I see David Clark.
Aye.
Deb Wright?
Aye.
What else do I got?
Uh, Margot, Ian.
Margot?
That's Jason.
Yes.
Ian's here.
Ian?
Ian is in there, I don't see him.
He's up on the floor, David.
Ian?
I vote yes.
Who's the picture, is that a school board member?
Don't know who the picture is.
Brenda?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye. Is that Jack?
No, my picture looks, I believe the picture is Tara Darrow.
Okay. And who's the one in front that I can't see behind that camera?
That is Lisa Terry. The L, the purple L.
Okay.
And then the S is me. The S is who, you? You, me, yeah, it's a shared, it's a shared thing, I have to, so I can control it back here.
The I's have it. The minutes have been approved. Communication and public comments. I don't have any in the room, is there any online?
Just opened it up because we've got it closed, so I don't know if there's any. I don't know if Susan Small here has anything.
Doesn't look like there's any communication or public comments, let's move on to policies. And Priscilla, I'm going to hand it over to you. You said we have a special ed update from G10 to D7. You have the floor.
Our special ed policy is a required policy by the state under D7. It was previously in, under G10. And the basic changes that we did through the committee last week was to add the two paragraphs that the state had in theirs, plus the manual that they referred to. Basically, the agency of education as the state, education agency is responsible for the overall provision of free appropriate public education to eligible Vermont students with disabilities, and does this through the implementation of the IDEA. The Bellas Falls Union High School then would use the guidelines developed by the Vermont Agency of Education and its most recent edition of their Vermont Special Ed Procedures and Policies Manual Regarding Special Ed Issues, a manual designed to assist Vermont school districts in understanding the provisions of the IDEA and meeting its requirements. And that manual can be found on the Vermont Agency of Education's website. The rest of the policy will stay as it was. It was in there from 2011, I believe, when it was adopted. So this would update it and make it current. So basically what we're doing tonight is we're letting you know what the changes are and what we're doing, because we need 10 days before we can adopt it. And we would appreciate any public comment, it will be posted so that the public can comment on this, as well as be available. So any comments, if you will, let us know that for the next meetings, and at which time we would want to adopt it.
Is there any questions for Priscilla on that? I see none, you have another policy to go through?
Yes, we had discussed last time that we had policy in the BFUHS Policy Committee just for the, for the high school board that we wanted to bring to them. And this was, would be how, you know, it would read. "It is the policy of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board to recognize, congratulate, and extend appreciation to the staff for their devoted service to the students, families, and staff. The administration of Bellas Falls Union High School will establish a procedure for recognizing staff members for their service." Are there any questions on that? Because that would be under the same kind of guise that we would be.
So the way that is written, we're not locked into anything. It's up to the administration, the school board, to decide what they want to do on an individual basis.
What they would want to do for, yes, for individuals. They would want to develop some kind of procedure so that, you know, there was some form of equitability for everything that somebody did and that kind of thing.
So they would need to make.
But they could recognize probably starting with even five years of service, or any kind of service, anything from a plan to something more substantial. It'll be up to them to decide on these things.
And would we need the procedure before we had the policy? Or just the policy is there and then administration makes a procedure? And do they share that with us?
Right, they, they can, we would establish the policy and then the administration would come up with a procedure for what they would want to do. They could get input from staff members, they could get input from community members if they wanted, from the school board, and then they could bring it to us for, you know, for our input, as well as a board.
So all we're doing is starting a policy to allow them to have a procedure?
Right. For them to establish one.
Mm-hmm. Does anyone have any questions on that? I don't see any on the screen, do you?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Priscilla.
You're welcome.
Our next is the principals' report. And John, I don't normally do this, but a question came to me earlier and I, I'm just hoping maybe you can help us with it. I wasn't quite sure where I should put it in the, in the agenda, but Deb Wright brought to my attention that we have some charges on our warrants for, for flowers and things, for nurses and support staff. And she's wondering where that comes out of the budget. Do we have a budget line and a policy for buying flowers and things? So it was something that, I'm not sure if you can even answer that today, if that needs to come to the next meeting?
I'll find out.
But if you will, I just, I try to, it's not, sometimes an email gets by me because I don't watch them post.
No, that's fine.
I did see that one, Deb.
Thanks, Molly.
So.
I'll have an answer for that.
Yeah, the next meeting is, but I think it's important, you know, she watches those warrants. If I see she's signed them, I think it's pretty safe for me to sign them. So I appreciate that.
Oh my God, you're trusting me?
Absolutely.
That's right, but thank you, Molly.
I know that you look at them really, really good, so I appreciate knowing that you're doing that.
Thank you.
So other than that, John, the floor is yours, I just wanted to make sure we had that.
Okay, for, I did send out, sorry it was Sunday, but I did send it out. Had a pretty busy weekend with fall sports on Friday night. Football, our boys continue to dominate and just play outstanding. They demolished Linden Institute on Friday. And now they'll be going to the final, state final at Rutland against MAU, who they beat earlier in the season. It'll be at 11:00 AM in Rutland. We got the first game, so I don't know if it's good or bad, but I always try and look at the positives. We'll be first there, we'll have a little bit more practice time than maybe some of the, the other teams who are fit in between and at the end. And just go and do the business and, you know, come back with a bacon. So on Saturday, went up to Burlington and girls, the field hockey team, they were beaten by South Burlington, but you know what? For those that maybe didn't watch the game, it was a closer game than the score suggested. You know, there's many different views of the venue, how far we have to travel. Every year we, we voice our concerns. Every year we get told we need to play in Burlington. They were not represented as well. They played very well. The other team were a good team too. We lost two early goals and I think that was just getting used to things. And then two, you know, three goals are hard to come back from, but you know what? We, we had, we had an opportunity. So I'm proud of all the kids, they did a great job. I know someone has to win, someone has to be second, but I'm very proud of them. And cross-country, the week before, they went to Thetford with a very young team, with the exception of one senior, and they placed second in the division. And they, they weren't that far behind, they were, I think, eight or nine points behind in positioning. So they all represented well and most of our young kids bettered their time. You know, they, though they didn't, they didn't win the championship, they were, they were very, very pleased at their individual performances. And I was very pleased being up there as well. So I've been around a lot this fall so far.
Did I read that a young lady won her class or something? I saw something about one of the girls had won something. No? Got you.
Not, not that I can think of. I know at the weekend, there was a meet of champions and Stephanie came seventh, which is phenomenal because that's against everybody else in Vermont. You know, you're racing against everyone in Vermont, so I think that was phenomenal.
I mean, that's what I saw.
So.
Thank you.
No, that was, that was excellent. NIAS visit is getting closer and closer. The visiting committee will be coming next Monday. And in my little blurb out to, to board members, I'd love it if you could, if you have time on Monday at 9:35, be about 40-minute meeting in the auditorium. Again, as they, they come in and they visit us, they like talking to everybody. And I'd like us to be well-represented everywhere, which I think we are. I don't think I forgot anybody. So if you can spare the time, we'd love to have you give some input on the school from as you see it and what you would like to see. I know you have a lot of input and guidance in, in the jobs you do, but it's nice to let others know that too, especially the accreditation of NIAS.
Could you show up for that?
Yes. I put everybody in, but again, they know that, I've been very clear, said, look, I'm inviting everybody. If they can make it, great auditorium, you'll have, I think it's about 14, 15 people in all at that time slot. And they have, there's five coming, so they'll probably have at least two or three of their people interviewing with guided questions, so. And again, please be honest and represent your school well, and that's what we want. We want to, we want to keep working to improve. So, and that's, I believe in the NIAS process. I was a big motion in getting them back and getting us re-accredited. And as I've said before, I like it so much that I'm now serving on the commission. And I've got to see other schools, I've got to see what it's been. It's been good learning for, for us and for me. And hopefully we can just continue to get better as we move through this pandemic and get back to.
John, can you tell the public what NIAS stands for?
NIAS, New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They are the number one accreditation society in our area. And they cover many schools, there's, there's not many schools in New England that aren't part of them. I can report out a final, a better number if I, if you want me to, I can research it. I haven't done that for tonight. Facilities update, on the tip of our tongue, we, we opened the, our Buildings and Grounds Committee met. It was a good meeting after we got started. I had a bit of a trouble on the Zoom piece, but we pulled it through. And we met to discuss the bids, we had two bids. And we decided though, as a, as a group, that the specs and the RFP were not clear. And it was decided to decline both bids for now and seek help in writing a clear RFP and have the full board meet with the two engineers, our previous one and the representative from M&amp;E Engineering who did our 262-page report, to explain that assessment of HVAC and maybe guide us in the writing of a, of a better RFP. I've also reached out to, at the advice of, actually to the VPA, I reached out to, what's his name? David Pickle at the, at Visbit. And, because I was advised to reach to him, and his fellow worker, Ben Provost. And Ben is giving us some advice on how to, how to do a better job at writing it, who to contact for more information, both in Visbit and the AOE. And hopefully we'll get a better product. And, where are we? And then send out the new RFP to a broader range of engineering companies and advertise in popular Northeast publications and anywhere else that might get us some quality to return the bids. COVID update, currently our, our current vaccination rate, that was more what I was looking at, student is 30.1, we have 94 cards in now out of 312. Still pedaling along slowly. I don't know any quicker way than to continually ask parents if they would mind sending us their cards. I know that the, our staff members are now, if they don't want to send them in, I believe Andy, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they can go in and show their cards to Jo Ellen, our human resource person, and that will be counted as seeing it. So we might want to think about that for our nurse, maybe, in the buildings for, if parents don't want to upload, they could come in and show them. I think we'd get a more accurate count of, percentage-wise, of kids that are on there. But again, that.
So I don't know of students uploading cards. I know that we set one up for staff, so if there's something set up for.
For parents, well, what we wanted to, what we've been doing all along is looking to only count them with showing their cards. And it was set up to upload them if they wanted to, again, it was a choice. It wasn't, wasn't you had to. And the parents did answer as well if their child was vaccinated or not. And a lot said yes, but didn't upload cards.
Ricky, do you know if that was set up similar to one you set up? Sorry, wasn't involved, you weren't involved?
No, no, he wasn't involved.
Might be, might be worth looking at the two, because we set it up as a Google form.
Yeah, we did too.
Okay.
But the, the actual verbal yes versus the uploading your card is hugely different. Last time I looked at the verbal, the verbals were in the 80s, so.
We saw that with Aaron Rodgers also, right?
Correct, yep. And I think that was all from, from me until later.
Hey, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Bradley, what does your gut tell you that your vaccination percentages? Would you say you're 50%, 60, 70?
My, my gut.
Or do you think you're at third?
No, no, not at third. I believe we're, I, my gut, off the record, believes we're over 60. Because I've, I've done a lot of the contact trace calling over, not so much this week, but the prior two weeks, and at least half the parents were saying, oh yeah, my kid's vaccinated.
How can we, how can we help you?
Again, like I suggested there, maybe if, if parents could show their cards rather than have to upload them, that might be easier. We could get a more accurate count very quickly then, or they could just come in and show them. I, I don't know what is the best way, but I'd like us to do that to get a clear count. As I say, we've got a lot of yeses, over 80% of yeses, but not the follow-through on cards, so.
Seems odd to me that somebody would say yes, but not show you the card.
Right.
I get why you were, if you're not vaccinated, you're like, get away from me, I don't want to talk to you. Or everybody's first, I get the whole HIPAA thing, I just, I don't understand.
Well, our, our form was pretty simple, it was, are you vaccinated? Yes, no, or don't want to tell us? And if you are, could you, would you mind uploading your card? And that, that was it. Thank you.
I got Priscilla and then Deb Wright.
I've got a few things, so I'll start with one and then I'll debdo and then you can come back to me. On the vaccination things, the nurse can document with, just showing, just like we, she does with other vaccinations, but how about a competition between the classes? You know, which class can get the highest percentage in?
We, I'm, I'm going to try and, we put out, we put out Dunkin' Donuts cards for uploading your, your thing. And I didn't, it increased a little bit, but it wasn't huge.
Okay.
So I think everything we do to help would be good.
Any ideas you come up with, I'm sure you come up with a great bunch of them. And anyway, the, the absence days kind of go with that. We had gotten like 97.4% attendance rates for 2021, when, at the last meeting, which was 2.6% absence. And I asked, we asked for your rates, to compare them to 2019. There were 261 absent days in 2021. There were, at the same timeframe, there were 883 absent days for 2019. That's a attendance rate of 92.67%, because there were 321 students, and an absence rate of 7.43%. So although we're fussing about the attendance and what COVID is doing to us, we've got better attendance now than what we had in 2019, when it was a regular, regular, normal, what we call normal, school. So I'm wondering if that, some of that impact is the social, emotional, and the wanting to have that contact with, with people, and wanting to be there, and just so much wanting to have a normal school and kind of thing.
That was, I read an article, you know, regarding the, this fall, and, and look at news articles and, and on the news about how there's more fights in schools and everything. And yet, our discipline had actually, was a lot lower this fall as well as the attendance than it was in 2019. So it's kind of contradicting, I guess it depends what news you watch and what show you watch.
That's good information, Priscilla.
That sure does.
Pretty astounding.
Yeah.
But that, but that was real facts, because that was taken from, you know, that was going from attendance. So the same as our data on, on discipline was.
I only went to the 25th, because I just went to the 25th for the 261 days. So I compared to the 25th, I left off the other two days, which were another 50 absences. Still running far above what we are this year.
Deb, you're next.
Yeah, my only question had to do with if we're using things such as photographs, that people take, take a picture of the card with their, with their camera and then send it to, upload it to the high school, is that what's being done? I mean, otherwise, it's difficult to, for parents to get photocopies of things or that sort of thing, that's all I meant.
Deb, we were, we were asking for just any photo, like from your phone, take a picture and upload it. Try and keep it as easy as possible, but I think, I think if we, if we do were to go to showing it, we would certainly have a higher rate, because I think it'd be less pressure and, you know, parents not having to upload, whether they wanted to show us or whether they just couldn't be bothered or didn't want to do uploading, because it can be a pain sometimes to get your phone out and, you know, if you're not super techno.
Get your phone out all the time.
If you're not super techno, it can be tough to upload.
Yeah, and, and my only concern, of course, is that people tend to lose things, especially something as such a small piece of paper as that is. I'm worried about mine deteriorating just in sitting in my wallet. So I wonder if, you know, if you release them to your high schoolers, are they going to be diligent about making sure they return home? Parents don't have to worry about what happens between here and the school, you know, that sort of thing. That's all, thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you.
Andy?
So just a couple of things and answer Mr. Terry's question too. Just let this person answer real quick. So when we did the mandate for, for faculty and for staff, we found a couple of things. We created this real slick, here you go, upload your kid, you upload your thing, how hard could that be? Right, same idea. Well, we have some folks that are, as Mr. Bradley just said, technologically not as savvy. So we had to then create a way for them to come in and we would take a picture or photocopy it and then we would upload it for them, so we gave that a combination. Then we ran into, and this goes right to Mr. Terry, what you were talking about, there were, we found that there are some employees, for whatever reason, did not feel comfortable providing us with a, with a photocopy or a picture or any, to have any documentation, solid documentation of their, their, that vaccination card. So then we decided to go to the method of having where they could come into, we took Jo Ellen, Human Resources, because it was a kind of a neutral place where they could come in and they could physically show the card, then we would, we would count that. So we had three, three levels to try and get to where we are. We still have some folks, Mr. Terry, who just, for whatever belief system, and I'm, you know, they just don't want to give up that information, they don't feel they should have to, some of them. And so I suspect we're dealing with all levels at, at where it is across the board. But, you know, I think that the other thing is, it's a little touchy, I need to talk with the nurses, there is a, there is a state database, but I don't believe that we can go in it to count the rates. But if they needed to go in, if we needed to decide on a close contact, if a kiddo was vaccinated, they may or may not be able to look at it, there's been some back and forth. I can't recall exactly what Secretary French had said, but that data, at first, they were not allowed to access that database, and then there, there was some easing of that to try and minimize close contact. So if they can go in and if they can use that database, we could then just go in and count that, because that's what's been submitted. But I think there are some, there are a few laws around that. But if we can, we will use that method, which could accelerate this whole thing, so. Ian has his hand up.
Ian?
Yeah, thanks. So I guess, do a comment and a question. The comment is that it sounds like masks work, keeping kids from sharing the cold even. But the question about the facilities is, how soon can we expect to, to see these engineers at a meeting? Are they going to just come to a regularly scheduled meeting? Or will we be, how far out will that be? I'm just worried that this project's going to keep getting, you know, delayed, it's pretty important.
Absolutely, we all agree, and that's where we got calls out to them, it's going to happen. And I didn't hear your first comment.
Just my comment was that it seems that masks work if we're having so much success with keeping kids in school. Just my comment was that it seems that masks work if we're having so much success with keeping kids in school compared to before COVID. Nobody's getting cold even, it sounds like.
Do you have a date, John?
No, I don't have a date at this moment, but I've got calls into both engineers and I was hoping that at some point next week, before, I mean, before Thanksgiving, that we can get them together and maybe Ian do like a minimum of Zoom. Just have everybody on Zoom and be able to meet with them individually, because we can invite one in and keep one in the waiting room and you won't have any of this crossover and question them the way that we'd like to question them. So.
And it's probably going to be a special meeting. We're, we're just going to call a meeting to get this done. We're not going to wait till the next board meeting. So we're tired on that.
I'm hopeful I'll have an answer tomorrow and get a date or a couple of dates and then we can get, I'll put out an email to everybody what works. So.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else for Mr. Brody before we go to the business office? Oh, Priscilla, you're up.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, the other information I had asked for, and since you didn't do it in your principal's report, I'm going to comment on it.
I get it.
Was the AP exams. It's not an easy thing to get a four or a five on, on an AP exam. It's pretty difficult. And 19 of our students got fours and fives. To pass, you have to get a three. They're scaled one, two, three, four and five. And 30 of our students got three or above, which is absolutely a wonderful thing, especially in a year when we were using, having so much COVID out there and having difficulty with doing instruction and everything. So I think we should be really proud of our students and just be able to say how extraordinary they are. I was wondering why there was one class, I'm assuming the whole class took the one where we had quite a few of them that didn't, didn't pass. There were four that did in that one class. And it just, it might have been a beginning class.
No, we, in our, in our preseason meetings, we, we discussed that with all of our AP teachers and I guess it's not pointing any fingers, because yes, they're teaching, but the kids are taking the test. But how could we, again, how can we help them? How can we make them better? How can we get our kids' scores up and make them better? And that, that's, that's ongoing. I mean, there's, there is workshops that they're going to be doing before they take the next set of exams and as they're teaching this year. And they're all working in a kind of PLC together on supporting each other and telling them what works for one and what works for the other. So I felt pretty good about those few meetings that we had.
And well over half of our students passed on, if you look at the overall number of exams that were taken, so that's good.
Yeah, I got all those numbers up. Three in the book.
Anything else, Mr. Brody? We see none. Let's move to the business office. Flor?
Yeah, I'm going to share what we have together for preliminary assessments of the high school. So that way we have an idea of the impact that the SU will have in the budget. We're cleaning up purchasing costs.
One more tap bigger Ricky, and I may be able to see it. Oh, that's good. That's my old eyes.
I did try to download it on a different format, so, because we usually have that issue that you can't see it.
So, Flor, you got the table?
So you do have your comparison from the past budget for FY22 to the current one, which is the first portion, which is FY23. So the overall total will be 5.9 compared to the past one for last year, which was 6.2. You can see as well, at the end, the difference between both of the years, which were the areas that had the biggest impact in the budget. So the current budget that we are assessing for the high school will be at least $99,000 below the one from last year. This is still preliminary, because it hasn't been approved yet by the SU board. But the idea is that this will be the budget, not to go up, but to maybe go a little bit more down. So we see the biggest change was.
So this is all SU stuff?
Yes, you, yes.
Good.
Because it's a big portion that drives the budget for the high school. And so we do have food service. It's just going to be a standard amount of assessment of $180,000, which is the biggest impact in the budget. As well as transportation, it went down at least $65,000 from current years. The reason for that is, is the amount of students that are being transported from the high school. So we assess according to that. And then we do have a slight adjustment for the physical service. That is due to HR now adjust reports to superintendent. Technology had a slight adjustment as well. And then the overall other changes that we see is, so the board, we do see that it increased. The reason for the increments in the board was, we do have the auditing services that they go up at least $5,000. And the other aspect is, we have special items like factivities is add on to the board's budget as well as legal services. Then we have custodial. Custodial is actually everything that implies in the SU offices. So the changes in custodial will be changes in the rent, insurance for the buildings as well as the communication line, which is internet and the cell phones that transportation is using, as well as the nurses. So we had to change some of the cell phones for the nurses and upgrade them to iPhones due to the need of having to communicate for COVID, as well as some students that have certain special needs that the nurses need to have an iPhone to communicate and upload some data for these students. And then overall, the price of oil, we all know, it keeps going up. Same thing with the superintendent's line is change in staff as well as benefits. Benefits did, went up a 6%. And then the last line, which is special ed, the change in special ed is now special ed portion that we used to get for grants and it changed. We had a decrease almost $100,000 in special ads, according to the change of how everything was assessed from the state as due to Act 173.
So this is the SU budget report for the high school?
Yes.
When we get to the high school, are we going to be able to see breakdowns of our lines when you have them lined up like that?
Once we have, once we have some budget committee meetings, because that's what I was telling Flora today, but now we've got a little bit of a clearer picture. I would love us to have one or two budget meetings so we can go through those before presenting, because I've got to meet with Flora this week to find out. I need a lot of explaining on a lot of lines before I want to meet with everybody to go through them all, because there's my, I wouldn't say lack of understanding, but just not knowing why a certain line is at a certain amount.
It's important to be able to answer questions that they ask you.
Yes.
You can't answer anything without.
Right now for the high school budget, we are 70%, 25% that we are missing is the miscellaneous. So Mr. Brody can't do a lot with anything that has to do with the increase in benefits as well as the changes in salaries for the 1.5 increase. So right now he would just be looking at all his miscellaneous expenses to see.
But he can look at, he can even look at his staff. I mean, there's ways to, I mean, it is, it is touchable if he wants to touch it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's just, I'm getting off what you're trying to do for me tonight, but, but there are things, a budget is very touchable until somebody approves it.
So right now I provided him the last portion that he needed so he could just analyze and finalize the budget for the high school.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Flora?
I do. Um, Flor, when you, when you were talking about the high school and you have a budget meeting, would that be on the spreadsheet that you sent out to us this morning? It's automatically generated, the budget versus actual report? Is that what that, what you're talking about?
So the budget versus actual is your current budget and how you are year to day in your expenses. It's not the same thing as what we presented. It's just totally different.
But that's the meeting Mr. Brody's talking about, so he wants to find out what these line items mean and why money's going allocated to different places that he'll be, he'll be able to drill down so he can answer questions? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So if you see your changes, your budget versus actual, you are going to see that you're going to have a lot of balances that are negative when it comes to your salaries, because what we budgeted last year for salaries is not current salaries. So that is a big factor there that we cannot adjust, because once we upload budgets, it gets set install. So that is what you're going to see. Now, if you are talking about anything in miscellaneous areas, that we could just go over if you have any questions.
I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page of what's going to happen. I'm good. Thank you.
So when we get this in our high school budget, we get, we have a, we have a WNSU line. So when you, you know, she's got it broken down here. So we can't do anything about that. But there's a lot of other things we can talk about and break down and see what they are. There used to be this report that we could see every single line and see what it was, what it meant. You know, if we were spending $100,000 on a driver ed teacher, you know, why were we doing, you know, we were, those questions were asked and, and, you know, those are kind of things that we can look at.
But we do have the budget versus actual that goes out every other week. That is what Jason has.
But what you're asking for is for this year, for the high school budget to look at it, you would like that line by line?
Well, this is currently what we have that I share with Mr. Brody. So do you want me to share it as well?
No, we'll wait for a budget meeting. I just.
Okay.
I'm just, and I know I, I feel like, I feel like I'm repeating myself and I apologize for that, but last year, the way we did the budget, I felt very uncomfortable being able to tell any community member what I voted on, because it was so consolidated like that, that I couldn't tell them why my superintendent line was, you know, $150,000 more than last year.
So you want.
I can't, I can't tell you these lines.
I understand.
But I can tell you, I, I will be able to tell you every other line as we drill down it. And that's what, that's what I want to do soon. I mean, I want to meet with Flora this week to get my questions answered.
And I don't mean that one particular, I'm just saying that when somebody comes and says, you know, why is this, this, you know, it's really, and maybe some board members don't get those questions, but I think a lot of us must. We've been on these boards a long time. People, you know, that's what they hold us accountable for is the budget. So I just want to be able to feel like I understand it better than I did last year. That's, so, sorry, I think I said that last meeting too, so I'm sorry I keep saying it, but I'm just really, I'm very passionate about that if you ever figured it out.
I did, I did get it. And I spoke to him today as well and he agreed that he would do his review and his analysis and then we could just.
And then we'll go through it as a budget committee and then we'll present it for the board. That's what I'd like to do. But I mean, very quickly, we can, we don't need months.
Yeah, we don't, no need to wait till the 71st.
It's not, I've started working now, but I have a whole list of questions that I want to know. That will involve huge reductions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Priscilla?
Yeah, and that's why we're getting so many questions too, I think, you know, from the community, because the reports and the town reports last year were so minimal that I, they really didn't know either. We're lucky that our budgets did pass. But, so what you're saying, let me clarify, is that in about two weeks, the budget committee, because I'd like to be able to plan, I'd be on the budget committee, will be, will be meeting to be able to discuss this, because. I know, the boards were talking last spring that we wanted it in October and so we're already pushing out a ways. Is, is that a fair assessment?
Absolutely. Who, who was on the budget committee? That's what, I guess that would be my question.
I think technically we all.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to burst the bubble here. Two weeks is the week of Thanksgiving. Is that?
No, I don't want to do it.
Are you planning on having it? Well, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want us to say we're going to have it in two weeks and then not have it.
I like us to meet next week if we could go fund to fund.
So you're looking for next week?
The ones on the budget committee are Molly, Jack, Priscilla, Deb and Jason. But any other member can also participate. There you go.
That's a good team.
Want to bring your big boots?
No, no, no. Yep. Thank you.
What's it look like, Andy?
I put this away and I didn't.
Next week?
Yep.
Not Monday, preferably not Monday.
We got a lot of purple, but let's see, there's a Rocky Hand, there's a Rocky Hand board meeting on Monday. There are negotiations on Wednesday.
Tuesday or Thursday?
Yeah, I saw something on my calendar for Tuesday, but I don't know what that is. Oh, effective and appropriate management of school boards. I should go to that though. Something I got roped into as a new superintendent, so. I, I mean, it depends on what time you're looking at.
I'm looking.
Five, six. Is your gun, I mean, yeah.
Five is not good for the lumberyard gun.
Yeah. Thursday would be ideal for me. I will tell you that. I mean, I don't know how that works for everybody else, but I don't know, my schedule's driven.
So that's the 18th one?
And who do you have on that group? Can you read it off again?
Molly, Jack, Priscilla, Deb.
You want, I can figure this.
Jack.
Molly, Jack, Priscilla, Deb and Jason.
All right.
What time works?
Six or after.
You want to get up six?
Do you want to say six o'clock here? So I'm going to get it out. Or tomorrow.
Is, are you just meeting with him, with her first or with us as well for that? You're starting out with all of us or you?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to meet. We'll meet during the day, Flora, and then I can go through with Andy too, but I'd like to meet with the boards on the 18th with board members.
Okay.
And hopefully we, we almost finished rather by then, I think.
Put it down.
That's okay. That works for everybody.
Are we all done? All right, nothing more for Flora. Then we're going to move to committees, building and grounds. Can we get that off that?
Yes.
Thank you. Building and grounds committee. Uh Building and Grounds Committee update, as you heard in the principal's report, we did meet. Apologize for anybody that, I think David's the only one that maybe was trying to get on and we we didn't do well with our Zoom meeting, but we're gonna get better at that. Um we rely a lot on Andy and Nicole and they were both busy, so. Um we, I think by the time we finally actually started doing some work on it, that was a decent meeting. David has put a lot into this and I think we finally, I think we finally like understood what he was trying to, to do for us and I don't know, I, I went out of there feeling better about what we're, what we're doing and how we're doing it and getting something written up that is much better sounding. All we did at that last meeting was, was work on trying to get these bids um done for the HVAC system. As John said, we, we had two bids come in. We did not accept either bid at this point. We're gonna get an appointment to meet with these two people just to hear them out. Um one guy put a lot of, lot of effort into a two hundred and some odd page before. So he's gonna be able to help us maybe understand some of this stuff. Um Margot has some, some, you know, giving us a little bit of help on how the process is working. And David has a lot of input on, you know, what we really ought to be looking at in the school for the HVAC. Everybody has things that they're, you know, that they're just better at than other things and so we, we kind of leaned on David a little bit to help us understand where we ought to be, what we should have been doing, what we, where we went wrong to come up with these two bids that were just so different, it wasn't funny. Description was the same, price was so different, it was, you know, we did something wrong. So really, we're getting help to get a better RFP, is that what it's called, sent out? With a better description, getting it sent out to a, a much larger range of, of companies so that we get some better looking bids in here and, and, you know, take care of our school the right way, not just jump on something because we think it needs to get done quick. We, we want it done and we want to get it done as quickly as we can, but we want to, we want to know that we're doing it right this time. And we're gonna lean on David a little bit to, to kind of make sure we're getting it done right this time. This is like our third try and we're spending a lot of money and we, we gotta get it right. And, you know, it's a lack of knowledge for, you know, none of us, none of us really know a lot about this. So we're gonna use these other two guys to help us um learn. This guy that wrote this report, I mean, he's, he understands the system. We're just gonna make sure we're getting what we need. Any additions? Did I get all that that we did, Jason? David, you got anything? I'm muted.
Let me make sure I'm, I'm muted here. If you're querying me, I'm gonna suggest that there are two things that we need to consider under HVAC. One is what I would refer to as health safety, which is the degree to which um our HVAC system is working efficiently to exchange air, which is one of the uh CDC questions that came up in August of two thousand twenty. The other, based on some of the information that was in the ME report, is there are some indications that perhaps the way the building is vented internally could um impact us negatively with regard to what's known as fire safety. And I think we have two very big topics there that we need to have a clear understanding of, which is um how effective our HVAC system is in uh containing and preventing the transmission of disease. These days it's COVID, but who knows what it will be in the future. And also uh whether in fact in this very open building, which has no physical fire stops in it whatsoever, do we have any concerns about the possibility of the drafting of the HVAC system rapidly spreading a fire in one part of the building to the other? Okay, that's, that's how I would, would define what the asks are. Now, in terms of RFP, uh Chris Hodson did something where I think was actually pretty heads up when he brought in ME, and that is that he appears, we turned him loose and said, tell us everything. And as a result of that, we have, you know, a two hundred and thirty or better page document, which in effect uh describes everything that we would want to consider in a bid spec. And we have to bear in mind the fact that Glenn Thomas, who uh engineered two thousand thirteen and two thousand eighteen HVAC upgrades, may have gotten a few things wrong. But at the same time, Mr. Thomas thinks eight, uh that ME may have gotten a few things wrong as well. And I think it's very important that we reconcile those differences before we do go out to bid. So there's, there's, there's the David overview.
Thank you, David. Margot, do you have anything to add? So that's building and grounds in a nutshell, and we're gonna just keep working on this HVAC system for right now. Is there any other committees that need to report? None that I'm aware of? I think we're clear. Unfinished business for discussion. Recap of vaccination, right? I think we just covered that, didn't we, John? All right, you're up. Update on Haver Grant.
Okay, um I sent out in the packet as well um all the stuff that I have privy to. I still don't have a cover letter for the payment. I don't, I don't know if there's one in the office. I don't know if there was one that was sent with a check. But I, Chris, all Chris's correspondence with Carolyn Hannan, uh memo from me detailing uh the contact with the foundation that I had. Update on the Haver accounting. Flora ran a report and had everything that we've spent the money on and how much we have left. And then I added a written proposal at the end of that report, and basically my proposal draft is to uh add a half credit of financial literacy graduation requirement for the class of two thousand twenty-five. Uh the course would be offered to juniors and seniors. Stat, again, the staffing is uh put in the budget a half FTE paid out of the donation for uh funding, which is approximately thirty-five K, give or take a little bit. Beginning next school year, uh that teacher will complete next gen personal finance, which, which some of the teachers have actually gone through some of this stuff, which is free uh to support learning. And then have more teachers as we move along to develop it, be trained without additional costs to our district. Other considerations, I'd like to budget out of that money at least three thousand per year for online learning to support students' needs towards graduation. And right now that includes a lot of health that kids are doing because uh we are still half a teacher down on that. And Ms. Gachuk is doing a great job uh at, she teaches some of our um health classes, Health Two, but she also has science, so it, it's hard, it would be robbing Peter of the faithful. So we're, we're doing the best we can and uh got, and our counseling department are doing a great job in replanning kids uh around health. I know it's not a huge requirement, uh but the kids are getting it when they need it and when they can do it. Uh scheduling, we would put uh, the course would be offered eleven to twelve graders. And it's determined that it would be necessary, i- if it was determined that ninth and tenth graders were wanting to take the course, uh we could do that also. Uh having half a credit requirement, well then you could, you could put it opposite, either Health One or Two or PE uh or a second semester AP course, so we could fit it into our master schedule pretty well. Teachers will spend the next couple of years developing curriculum for the courses. We've already have one teacher who's working on that right now and in a, teaching a prototype of financial literacy this semester, which we're hoping to continue next semester. And then financial literacy will be offered as a full credit course. That's the, the development of it uh starting, I put this year, but really, we, we've worked on the prototype. Eleventh and twelfth graders strongly encourage to sign up and more next year. So I would take out that twenty-one, twenty-two because we're not gonna be able to do that because we're in that year. Uh twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're gonna put it in the master schedule uh to develop and provide eleven to twelfth graders with the access when they plan their schedules. Um and as I say, if we use the money right now to uh pay for a half FTE, that will remove half an FTE from our uh spending budget. So that will reduce certainly by half a math teacher, uh covering the funds with uh our donation. And with that said, that, that should uh see us through the next six to seven years. And again, uh Maureen Haver loves us, loves uh financial literacy, loves Phillips Falls Union High School. Who knows what they're gonna give us down the road? My fingers are crossed, and hopefully I can feel as proud to get more finances.
David Clark.
Yep.
David Clark.
Thank, thank you, Molly. Lower that hand. Okay. The Haver documentation that John Brody rounded up, and John, I actually appreciate your effort here. The first reference that I can find in this is Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, a note from Carolyn Hannan to uh Chris Hodston. And I have to tell you that I'm not certain we have actually a response from Mr. Hodston. And um my recollection of the initial rollout of Haver from Principal Hodston was that there were four main purposes. Financial literacy, uh distance learning, math and science. I notice that distance learning is not one of the areas that John mentioned, but that may have just been an oversight. Okay, that's October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. The next one I find is um on October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. And it's a note from Carolyn Hannan to Chris Hodston. It says, did you mention you have a written plan for the funds after speaking with your senior management team? And about forty-five minutes later, Mr. Hodston replied, and this is only in part. We have a range of ideas, but not yet a written plan. Okay, that's it. That's it. That's October two thousand nineteen. There's nothing in two thousand twenty that has uh surfaced so far. And this brings us to uh Friday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And John Brody asked of Ms. Hannan, is there any official paperwork for this donation? Well, um if there's any official paperwork for this donation, it's still missing in action. And uh John Brody did query uh former Principal Hodston on the sixteenth. I believe, and Mr. Hodston's reply was, I have nothing except a long string of emails which I have shared with you. Now, I don't have that long string of emails, and as I suggested early on, these emails should be available on the WNESU servers because they're WNESU property, and we might have some sort of idea of what was involved in that. And I have to point something out here. Um we do have a proposal tonight from uh Principal Brody says, uh this is the document called BFUHS Financial, pardon me, BFUHS Financial Literacy Proposal Draft Staffing. Budget a halftime FTE math teacher from the funding, approximately thirty-five K, beginning school year twenty-two, twenty-three. And it goes on to say curriculum. Teacher will spend the next two years developing the curriculum for these courses, okay? We're talking four years after the uh initial offer of Haver money before we actually do something concrete with it. And um I bluntly think that that's an embarrassment to this school that um we have been gifted a quarter of a million dollars and we have absolutely no idea what we're gonna do with it, except um as documented in a uh an expenditure uh report dated um October twenty-second, which indicates that we spent about uh fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars and is entirely on BYU, that's Brigham Young University in Provo, Utah, BYU classes online, and a few things from the Vermont Virtual Learning Consortium. Okay, now, I got a problem with this. The problem is that anyone who's been looking at high school warrants for a while knows damn well that for years and years and years, uh items like the BYU online courses have been part and parcel of the BFUHS budget, and those funds were expended from that uh BFUHS general fund, if I'm using the term correctly, Flora. And I am unhappy to see that absolutely nothing has happened in two years of a substantive nature with Haver. We don't even know, um shall we say, based on primary sources, why exactly Haver gave us the money in the first place or what they intended for us to do with it. And I think before we go any further, we need to know exactly what it was Haver intended. Um I am not happy with the fact that um we, we have to rely on third-hand representations from now two successive administrations of this school, and we don't have a clue as to what Haver, in their own words, intended for the use of this money. And I am going to go just a little bit further and say that if we can't nail it down, maybe what we should do is make up the difference that we have spent to take um items off budget and return it. But before we do that, I really think that we should find out, you know, what Haver actually intended. If there are emails, and I've said this to you before, if there are emails between Principal Hodston and Haver, they will be archived on the WNESU servers. Maybe we need to have a look at that, okay? So yeah, I appreciate the fact, John, that you do, you know, have some ideas here. I'm not at all happy with the two years from now timetable. I, I don't think that's acceptable. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, David. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Priscilla.
I'm assuming that, that it was, actually was financial literature, financial literacy, sorry, uh distance learning, science and math. And if so, I would say that the financial literacy, personal finance that um is being planned is something that we certainly can go ahead with. I would say that we can't put it in as a graduation requirement until um twenty twenty-six because it, the requirements for the incoming class for this year have already been established. So we really can't change that for that timeframe. I do know that in the November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen minutes that David moved to accept the generous gift, and he noted areas of financial literacy, online coursework, the study of economics and the study of science. So that has been documented. So I think moving forward, the financial literacy certainly is within our realm of being able to do that. And I don't see any problem with our proceeding with that.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anyone else? Haver Grant. All right, um the next one we have on here is budget discussion, but I think we just did that, didn't we? All right, so we're gonna move on to that. So new business, excuse me, new business for discussion is use of the gym. Um that's always been a hot topic here for quite a while and I guess I'm interested to know, Mr. Brody, what are the? what are the, what, how do we use the gym?
Okay, so we have a facility use form that we fill out when anyone wants to use our gym for anything. And we look at it, and we look at what is scheduled for our school, our kids. So, you know, if there's a play on or whatever, you know, that trumps us letting people use the building. If there is an associated cost, if we need maintenance, that's all on the form. So that would be the first area. We do promote, if it's for our own kids and for our own local kids, meaning all different ages. I presume that it's just an open-type gym where it's, anybody can go.
So are there times where?
There, well, I think between seasons where coaches aren't allowed to practice two weeks prior to, for example, the basketball season starts on the 29th of November. So the two weeks prior to that, which would be up to the 15th of November, any of our coaches, contracted coaches couldn't work with the kids, but they could do stuff with anyone.
What if, what if a kid just wants to go in and shoot the ball around?
We would need some sort of adult supervision. We'd have to have it documented, as I say, in a facility use form. So like if Jason wanted to come in and run an open gym, he'd fill out the facility use form, put it down. There won't be any cost because there's no, you wouldn't really need a custodian or anything, unless, I mean, you might, I don't know.
But we need to add that and the person, so the insurance.
Okay.
In case something happens.
Okay, yeah, may I forget some, either if it's our own kids.
Hey, hold on. He's going to melt down here in a second.
No, no, I guess my question is, in my past dealings with this and other districts, was that the liability form, the person who was asking to use it had to provide their own insurance.
Correct.
For us to add insurance on to any person who came on here would be, we'd be taking on that, number one, the liability, but number two, the costs. So the question is, if an organization wanted to come in and use our facility, do they have to provide any proof of insurance?
Yes, yes.
What kind of insurance do they have to prove? Just health insurance?
No, they have, there would be something that would state exactly what they need. We might need to ask Visbit. I don't know how often.
Someone need a liability insurance in case anything happens.
And that's only to protect the, you know, the school and the institution because if someone were to get hurt and we allowed them into our facility, then we accept the liability for that injury. And everybody's friends until someone's kid gets hurt and like their whole career is gone. That's, and so that's when it becomes contentious. So it's just to make, that's the coverage piece, so.
So Molly, thanks for putting this on. Actually, my question is this real simple. The middle school is allowing kids open gym next week for basketball. And I know in years past, you could not get in this gym until basketball started on the day of with a different regime. And I really believe that you're different. And I'm hoping that after fall sports, which is next one day, that you have, maybe a teacher would volunteer to sit and so kids can have an open gym for a couple hours. I'm hoping that you would do that. And actually, it's on page five of our policy handbook for boards. Page five of the school board says, "Facilities, transportation and food service." So we actually have control over the gym at the board. Says, "Adopts policies governing use of the public buildings, grounds and equipment." So if I would have known that 10 years ago when I was trying to get in the gym every day after football, I probably would have came to the board instead of that previous administration. From this, I think that, I think Mr. Brody would.
I'm open for, I mean, you know me, well, those that know me, they like keeping our kids busy and keeping them going. And if it makes them happy and healthy, that's great. My only reservation is on the 22nd, it'll be closed for redoing the floor. So it would be anywhere from the Monday, the 15th, that week. We could open it up that week.
And so like last year, just to further explain, like, so last year, no, you know, COVID was, I mean, it's still a thing, but it's less, in my opinion. I'm not a doctor, I swear. So last year, kids, we couldn't practice, couldn't get in the gym until the state said, "Go." And then, so what was happening was, okay, they couldn't use our gym and their pod with their friends. They're all over the state going to Rutland and everywhere else. You have to travel, you get the dark nights. I prefer our kids in our gym practicing now because you know every other school is already doing it. You know what I mean? And I'm a competitive guy, so I just, I want to win. And I think if we can have some advantages, it's healthy for the kids, it's great for their mental health, it's great for all that stuff. That's all. I think, I think that you'll do it.
See what we can get work and see if we have, if it's, so if it's only our kids and we have a staff volunteering, are we all set?
That's different, right? So I was looking at an outsider group coming in where you had said, like, if Mr. Terry wants to rent it, that's where we have to.
Isn't he a staff member? He gets his little, little check at the end of the year. I think he might be productive.
Yeah, I don't count him as an outside.
Well, I know my son and I sure was playing. It's December 16th outside.
I mean, think back. I mean, that I would, I would want to double-check with Visbit. And then again, where my worry is, is I wouldn't also want to put Mr. Terry, using that example, in a situation where he might also become personally liable and his homeowner's insurance then might get tapped.
No, I'm not necessarily going to do it myself. I mean, I.
No, I was using, we're using that as hypotheticals and, you know, so, but if we had a teacher who was there, 100% that would be something where, that's an event that we're putting on, so then there would be no need for the outside stuff.
Priscilla?
I'd like clarification on that. The, the, basketball starts the 29th, and they can practice two weeks before that?
No, they can, kids can do whatever, whenever they want.
The coaches can't practice.
Their coaches that we've contracted can't work with them. It's in any sport.
They can't work before the 29th or they can't?
Two weeks prior to the season beginning. So preseason starts on November 29th. So if you back that down for 14 days.
So they can't practice between the 15th and the 29th with them? Okay.
So you can, you can.
You can't have an instruction.
I know, because I was thinking, I was thinking the other way.
Like, I could go.
You know what they call, they call.
I understand.
Right, but then there's no adults. Then if it could get.
No, you could have an adult, you could still have an adult there.
Oh, yeah, glad you have, yeah, have an adult there. I think I might have an adult, actually. I may have an adult.
That'd be great.
Actually, I think I've got one.
I think that would be great for the kids.
I think it's just great for.
Well, at least it would be given that week, and then the week that the floor gets done, half of it's Thanksgiving anyway. And then when they come back, they've got a brand-new floor to buy.
And it's boys and girls open gym for all of high school students. That's great.
Good, thank you. Date for next meeting. Got so excited about the gym being new that I wasn't prepared. The next date is actually the 22nd, which is the Monday before Thanksgiving. It's, that's never a good week for us. It never works well.
Well, I'm going to try and get a special meet, no doubt, the end of.
Okay, so we're not, we're going to move our next meeting to, because we're going to have some budget meetings. We're going to have a special meeting for the HVAC buildings and grounds. So our next actual meeting is going to be 13th of December.
That's really a long time.
It is.
How about the 29th of November?
We can do that. Is that good? Has somebody else got something on the 29th?
Not right now, but I can.
Okay, there we go. We're taking it. November 29th.
Six thirty?
Six thirty. I heard that. Do we have an executive session tonight? Deb asked me a question that I didn't know. Glasses? Will we be discussing the lawsuit settlement and executive session tonight? Deb, I don't think we are by the looks of what the superintendent look just gave me. Maybe you could confer with him and we'll have it next. Should we be doing something on the next meeting, Deb? I don't know what it.
That was my understanding, but, but I'm assuming they would know more than I at this point. Thank you very much.
We have nothing.
I'm not versed up this speed.
Okay, we have nothing on that tonight, but maybe.
We need to do a quick executive session, like five minutes, so that we're not all sitting here.
No, I think we don't have anything. We're not going in executive session. All right, so we're going to go into director's comments, and I'm going to start with David.
Thank you, Molly. I'm all set.
Deborah?
It looks like I'm all set tonight, too. Thank you.
Okay, Margot?
I'm all set, thanks.
Ian? Are you all set, Ian?
I am all set, and also I.
I still didn't hear. Brenda? Jason?
Yeah, just like the real quick knowledge, Veterans Day this week, and to our men and women in uniform, past, present and future. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla?
Just a shout-out to our team that's still going to the States this weekend and that we're proud of all the ones and all their accomplishments over the last week.
And you beat me to it, Priscilla, but I'm very, very proud of being part of this community and this school and watching all of these kids succeed on the field and off the field. I spent a lot of time in the last few Friday night football games at the snack shack for the Booster Club. And what a great group of people. And, you know, you've got some women there that are just so committed. All I do is show up and make some coffee, but these women plan this all week long and run and get stuff and have things. And it is, it's a real joy for me to be part of that, and they just let me come in and do my thing. And I don't have to, you know, I have no other responsibilities other than making some hot cocoa and some coffee. But it's, it's, it's just been a great experience. And I'm real proud to be part of that. They're really good people and they're doing it for nothing but for our kids. And it's just a great establishment. So thank you to the Booster Club and thanks for letting me be part of it. And I'm going to say the meeting is adjourned. Yeah, 7:53.